We'll call to order the regular committee of the whole meeting here. Uh, we're gonna start with that today versus the business meeting since we have a lot of folks here for the, uh, um, the first item here. Uh, is Cory, Cory's online. Uh, can we do a roll call to begin, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember Robinson. Seeley.
Here.
Connell.
Here.
Shimmer.
Here.
Obrin.
Here.
Musson.
Here.
Kearns.
Here. Alright, I'm a little out of order, but can everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to this body, and to the citizens of this country. And to all that deliciousness, honor, and devotion under our oath. And to the people who live in this world.
Alright, we'll go right into our first item here with the CDBG coronavirus, uh, stuff. Matt, you wanna kick it off, or do we wanna send it to Kelly?
We're gonna send it up to... We're gonna send it up to Ms. Kelly to give us an update on the hours and hours that she was on the phone with the great folks that are sitting in the audience to talk about facade grants, to talk about microloans, and to talk about daycare. Ms. Kelly?
Thank you. Good evening, Your Honor. I am Councilmember Matt McIsaac, an older business owner, and have the pleasure to talk to the little guys that live. I am a proud and honest candidate for this important business, and I am very excited. Um, Sarah and I have the honor of speaking as business owners to express our interest in the three things. Although we know that every event on the ship is based upon by the very business, the grand scheme has a 29 businesses with the potential of over 50 actual facades, with the potential for like size and mass, with like 18 micro enterprises and to make it. Everyone was told that the potential for a 1% match is for architectural teams for the facade brands. They were also told that they would be federal funds in a special commission involved. They were also told about the MI and the public departments, as well as the project that was funded by the light fund for 2013. With exception of one of the daycare apps, all the business owners in the community that they were to have a 1% match at the point. Now, many would say that it wouldn't go that high, but they value this topic too, and every tip to the ultra-level two funds in the ultra-part of the city is worth of the 1% of the debt of the government. And also like that, if any of these businesses are able to share their collective knowledge of the local business, like can drive through this lucky downtown area, so it's a 2% time just to find the process by. To be able to be a part of such, except any opportunity because of the value of downtown, the best business of mine of professional and professional. If that all turned back over, then I will leave so that someone has the next question that makes you want to hear.
I think the big one is, did you get this update what the state of Iowa came back to you and you were asking about the facade grants and that it's looking to be like 30% of the 3.31 million dollars? You could cover that real quick.
Oh, yes. Actually, I was talking to Sarah, she is our, um, AIDA expert, and I was thinking upstairs of the micro enterprises this afternoon, and there's been a lot of, um, confusion and somewhat difficult to reach, um, advice. So I wanted to make sure I had it on first, I could advise you all. But we were talking about, um, the facade, and that there's the long-term effects that the side of the building, and how it affects the city, and she said, yes, if you can do that, that will pass. She said, we always have the three things. And now actually, there is nothing else, she said, there's 31 that are down, or that are ironed, and that's the side of the right of the side. And she said that out of the 31 million dollars, and the top five available, only 30 of them match the side, because the side actually, there's a different criteria, that the side considers someone's life, and 70% of that 31 million has to do with the benefit of the market, which is, it's definitely, then, the side, which, which, it's like. So she had, um, I guess, also like, if there's one to do with the third pass, and that, um, has, and if I'm going to, I could advise you, another option to consider depending on how the business management is on it.
Yeah, so we'll kinda cut to the chase, and so originally when we did the council report, we were trying to focus on the facade because it aligned more with our strategic goals and objectives, and it would be here for a long time to come. But I think with the recent change in that 30% piece, I think we're gonna make the recommendation tonight that we have Kelly pursue both the facade grant and the microloan and also daycare. And when I say pursue, that means we have to get really on it, because for the facades, as she was telling Lisa and I, it's all about the story that's gonna be told, as well it will be for microloans, because you have to relate it back to COVID, how you were unable to hire somebody maybe during the COVID piece, but now you could hire. And then we will work and bring back to the council how we're gonna come up with the criteria for the microloans, because, for example, let's say we have 18 people that are interested, which we do, who's priority one and who's priority 18? We have to determine that objectively. Is a app for a cash register more important than a grill? Or is a person being hired more important than an apparatus that would go inside your business? So we need to probably work with you guys and both, uh, the Lions in downtown and figure out what is that criteria, because you're all a part of it. So you can give, we'd want to get your 10 cents on this, not 2 cents, because we wanna be objective, because it's gonna be how you tell the story, but also how we submit in. Because when we submit it in, the state of Iowa is gonna tell us, yep, these are approved, and these aren't approved also, but it has, so that's the story that has to be told. But I think we kinda changed course, we were trying to focus to get the biggest bang for the buck, because we're looking to go in after a million bucks, but it's gonna be hard with the facades, and now they're cutting it down to only 30% can be facade. So I would ask all the folks that are here and online to get with Kelly as soon as possible to put that together, and also ask the council if you'd give us, uh, the motion to move forward on getting an architect hired, because we have to get to all the businesses that would like to get facades, and we have to have the same person or persons evaluate those facades. Because Kelly, can you share the story, like when you first got the winner set and they would've been awarded facade grant, and what you ran into when you gave us the story about the 60%? Do you remember that?
Right, right. So, so many times when you have an architect, always you have to, like, condition the building on the surface. So as the contractor knew the start to do the work, many times they found that their status didn't suit what they could tell, um, just first blush. And so many times, what they had to do is to the budget departments, they had to say, okay, the building, to include the building, we can only have 60%, this is a hundred percent, um, bringing it back to, uh, to, I'm sorry, to the story of the historical integrity of the building, sometimes you can't do that a hundred percent, to the, to the hundred percent of parts to the budget departments. So it's really, really important, and so the bottom line, is it is really important to have one person that, every single building, you can look at it from the same lines of the screen, that has the same expertise. You can put together a budget that, that is asked, the biggest part of the, keep in mind that, oh, right.
Yep, and we figured is, getting this all done, even if we're only able to get X number submitted in for that, we'd still have that historical piece for either Lions or the downtown that they can have on hand to be ready for other additional rounds that might come out as well. But then on the microloans, we need as much information from all the folks that applied that we can possibly have, because that'll make the packet stronger, that Kelly will have to submit on behalf of the microloan process too. So what we're looking for today is if you guys will give us the nod, this is the facade that is actually put in an application, and then also give a, a motion to move Kelly forward, for all the folks to get their information in, both on facade, on microloans, and also on the daycare, and get those in.
We, now, we can get this application submitted right away, but, or...
Yep, Kelly?
How many applications did we admit? Three and 30?
30 that went online, but, but we were talking about before, oh, so what Councilmember Seeley was talking about is like, the number of people that have already put in for like facades, there's three, but, but my opinion is, and see if Kelly says yes or no, these are folks that already were working on facade things and already had all that done, and then all of a sudden...
Was it three cities or three individuals?
I think three cities, but correct me if I'm wrong, Kelly. The three cities that have submitted?
Three individuals have applied so far.
Yep.
Now, they obviously didn't go through the architect and doing all that then, did they? I just don't want this to...
Yeah, they had to.
...put it down.
They had to, yep.
Okay.
The project is, is part of the, of the, of the division. What probably realistically happened is that the division, is they probably already applied to the regular, the, 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 they had all their homework done, and it was nothing that could've been so applied for those. Right? They didn't only give the board a joint, but it probably fall back. They don't get, they don't get this one.
Okay.
Gotcha.
So we need to get moving.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion, probably move forward.
I would ask for two different ones. Motion to move this package forward to include facade, microloan, and daycare? And motion for the RFP?
Are we, motion on the first item? Are we putting a dollar value to each of those? Or is it just kinda?
Just because it wasn't what it was in the council report, so we're gonna allow that to shift a little bit?
I would just tell you that we would have, we're still in a position to offer from the city side, whichever way we go, a hundred thousand dollars for match.
Okay.
At this point in time. For either or, about, for the first two, daycare is, they have to match themselves, but for microloans and for facades, we, we right now have put aside that we wanna do a hundred thousand.
Up to.
So we said it's gonna be up to a hundred thousand dollars. And then the, the architect, architect firm that we would be contracting with would be under city jurisdiction doing...
Yep.
Community outreach. And that'll be part of that hundred thousand dollars that will then, not big it all that, big it all that.
Right, 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 yeah.
But including the match.
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, so we have a motion from Councilmember Musson for, uh, moving the package along. Do we have a second? So a second from Councilmember Kearns. Is there any other discussion?
I would, I would say that, I guess in the RFP, we should look at a hard second on the architect, because there's 29 that we know of, up to 50 because of size. Up, up to 50 folks, that if we have a primary winner on the RFP, architect, we look at a possible second to work in conjunction just to get through the applications as quick as possible.
Would that...
It's not been expensive.
But would that...
There's a lot of work for one firm, and we do use a firm that we have...
But that, would that not keep it in the same eyes? Like Kelly mentioned, you want the same person looking at it with the same eye?
I think, I think if we craft our RFP to say that you're working with the city together, I think that we could probably do that.
Maybe that one might do downtown and one do like Second Street and Main.
Mm-hmm.
Those are together, because that's similar.
Could do that.
Because we had to, I mean, 29 applications, there's, that's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work, and it needs to happen quick.
Yeah, Kelly needs it like next week, right?
Okay. Well, wait, if we do an RFP for this, then it's gonna have to wait for them to do, then it has to get approved, then it's, I mean, wow. Uh, this is within your...
Spending authority, but we need to keep it below...
Yeah.
For two firms.
Yeah.
And then a hundred thousand dollars, so we've got it, we've got some...
Can, how, can we just get close?
Yeah. Instead of doing a full-blown RFP, we can do that.
Yeah. Okay. So let's, let's do, uh, unless there's any other discussion on the first motion of moving this forward. The first motion would be moving the package forward to have Kelly, uh, start working on this and getting it together with the, the business.
I want the architect.
Yeah, we haven't made that one yet though.
Okay, yeah, let's do this.
So on the first one, do we have any other discussion on that? Okay, can we have a roll call on that motion, please?
Councilmember Robinson. Seeley.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shimmer.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musson.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes. Perfect, so then now, yep, go ahead.
And Kelly, and when, when would you prefer to get the stories from the applicants? To get all their information? Right now, because you're gonna have to line that up for both the facade and microloan, so when do you need that as we're parallel planning?
Let me think about that.
Okay. Okay, no, that's fine.
Perfect.
I just wanna make sure we can give homework assignments to all the folks that came tonight.
I think we can give them the homework anyway.
We can give them the homework, yeah.
To get, to get working on that, and then when Kelly's ready, hopefully Musson will be ready to roll.
Right.
So there's a short deadline.
So what's the homework?
The homework is to start creating, um, your plan that relates to COVID.
The story they need to be able to tell, the facades, and the story they need to be able to tell for microloans, and then what they wanna be able to, the amount they'd like to get, and then what they... I guess that's, that's another question too, Kelly, is right now, we're, we're not really saying what, where the amounts are. Do we, do we wait and just take every application and tell, the state of Iowa tells us how much funding we're legit, to then determine that, or do we include that in their ask?
Do you want to know that this thing has a...
I know.
I think we can determine it afterwards, because depending on the size of the pod, it's gonna depend on how we try, wanna just, just keep it at...
Gotcha. Yeah, but on the microloans, though, are we gonna look at the 250K? That we talked about, originally we looked at 250K, or are we gonna wait to see what you get from all the applicants?
Can you turn that to the micro enterprise?
Yep, for the micro enterprise, yep.
Um...
Let us, let us wait to see what we get.
That's a good question.
Yep.
Because ultimately, making a plan for the 50,000, and that's the, I mean, most likely, the, 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 available.
So they should...
Yeah, they should, yeah, they should go for the max to hopefully justify the max, but then we'll see once the monies come back, because, and we don't know, is that, would it be a good assumption to say that the monies will be awarded based on what they write up, so when we get the money back, it should reflect those amounts that each of those folks on the applicants requested?
Right, yeah, absolutely. You have to have the, for everything that is, and everything that is, has to be, the security process, the, 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 the money, it's, it's...
I know.
Okay.
Now, if, after this, is all the, who do they contact with information? Kelly? And where do they get her contact?
Actually, she got contacted by 70 people. Alright. There you go. Okay, so I would like to make a motion, direct Matt to get bids from an architectural firm, and I'd also like Matt to just move forward after he receives the bids as on his, but then reason.
I would, yep, I would propose an amendment to that, uh, in accordance with a purchasing policy, to do so, and...
Yeah.
He's gonna wanna say the number, so that can hear it.
Correct, yeah. Okay.
I'll write it down on my paper right here.
Alright. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to direct city administrator to get some, uh, bids for architecture firm to help out with the, the facade, um, uh, architecture stuff, yeah. I don't know what I'm saying. Uh, any other discussion? Just thanks to Kelly, she sounds like she's really working hard for us.
Thanks, Kelly. For Christmas, we're gonna get her $2.99 headpiece.
Alright, uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Robinson. Seeley.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shimmer.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musson.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes. Alright, uh, moving on to library update, Suzie? Go ahead.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council, Susan Messacre, Clinton Public Library Director, also have with me Bethany, our new Public Services Librarian, and Pauline Nixon, who is one of our library board members, others. Oh, and we have Dan Macalany also as one of our library board members here tonight, so thank you. And I believe we have a one sheet, like we did last year.
Nice. It's good, too.
Thank you. So, um, you know, during the fiscal year 2021, this was pretty much the entire, you know, COVID time, whereas the previous fiscal year, we had half the year non-COVID, and then the other half COVID, so obviously our numbers are not where they were last fiscal year, um, but I think it's still pretty amazing that we had, you know, over 54,000 items circulated when the previous year we had about 60,000. So even being closed, um, various times, um, last year, um, was, you know, difficult, but we got through it. Um, some of the things we decided to do was pop-up libraries to do programming outside the library, and so we did, um, over 83 programs, not just the pop-ups, but, um, most of those were pop-up library programs, and then we also had, um, grab-and-go crafts for the public. And I think during a time when you can't get together, it was very helpful to have an activity they could take home and do with their family. Um, and we always like to, you know, share our various, um, different statistics, um, so I didn't know if you had any questions about those. Um, we also bought two new 3D printers for our Makerspace, and we do have the Makerspace open in our lower level, which right now does triple duty. It is part bookstore from the friends, and it's part meeting room, and it's part Makerspace. So we are doing triple duty downstairs. Um, and we also bought a new, um, access to a new database called News Bank, and that has, um, Clinton Herald, um, recent articles that you can read, and also it can be read to you. It also has Iowa, other Iowa library, or Iowa papers that you can access, which is really awesome, and some other world, um, news is also in there as well. Um, and it doesn't really have pictures, but it's basically the articles, so you can search that, um, and do that. And we're also doing a photo project right now at the Lions branch, um, and that's been a lot of work for the Lions branch. So, um, I also just wanted to mention, we always like to say, um, that patrons saved over a million dollars every year, this is pretty much a similar number from last year, it was a little bit higher last year, um, that patrons save that much. So basically, the cost of books to buy versus checkout from the library, databases to use, um, ebooks to check out, um, we also have e-audio, so you can listen to books, um, on your phone or your smart device. Um, so those are things that we just kind of like to highlight. And then also our summer reading program, it overlaps our fiscal year, so I always like to highlight our summer reading program. We've been going online, so people can actually register their children and their families, and even adults registered this year for our summer reading program, um, and also teens. So we had, we had a small amount of teen readers, about 22, however, they read over 39,000 minutes. So that's pretty substantial for, um, our teen population. And then for, um, our ages six through 11, we had 72 readers for over 25,000 minutes. So even with the ongoing pandemic and using this new online tool, um, we'd be able to reach, you know, more families and get kids reading. Um, and this year, we also, we applied for a ByState Literacy Grant, and so we got $500 to give books away for home libraries, which is also really important to us. Um, every year for summer reading, we give books as prizes, uh, for summer reading, and so this year, we gave over 166 books to kids locally, and then at our pop-up events, we gave over 358 books away. So those are really important things to have, um, for children, so they can read things more than once and not have to worry about, um, returning it. So I do wanna remind people, though, that juvenile items do not have fines, so, um, that is another incentive to use your library. So I just didn't know if anybody had any questions.
Are you still gonna do the pop-up libraries this fall?
Yes, we are gonna go until we can't be outside anymore. I think, um, if you know a little bit about our building, it is turning 117 this year, and one of our air... one of our air conditioning units went out on the children's floor, and so we wanted to start having programs there again, but it's too hot still, and I guess next week it's also supposed to be warm. So we are going to continue through October to have, we've been using Clinton Park a lot for our library storytimes. We've also gone to the Lions location and done them at the Foursquare Park.
Awesome.
Awesome. I thought I remember seeing you guys at Jerkensen, too.
Yes, we pop up soccer and one, I think, a baseball game, and we're going to expand that next year. It was so popular. And I remember a parent came up to me afterwards and said, at another event, they said, you know, my kids came up during the soccer game and said, hey, I want to go over there. And the, the parent said, well, how much is it? What are they selling? And they said, nothing, it's the library. They're just doing a craft, and they're giving out books, and they're talking about the library. And so that was really awesome. So thank you for seeing that. We're taking the library to where the people are and giving them something to do out in the wonderful parks that we have.
Something good, yeah.
Awesome.
And how many minutes did you get reading this year?
Myself? I don't know, but since I started working here two years ago, I've saved over $3,000 in library.
Very well. Very well. That's awesome.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you back in a second. We're in the next meeting starts. All right. Matt, moving on to your portion here.
I'd like to take a motion to, we'll walk through these real quick here. But so this is actually a really success story here. This was a house that we had a lot of neighbors come and discuss with the police and with the mayor and with the staff. This is now our house, V S our house.
They got in front?
Our house. Anyway, so now it's 657A, so there's going to be some folks checking out, walking through. They'll open it up for them so they can put bids on it. It's actually a really good neighborhood over there on First Avenue, since we got to meet all the neighbors when they came in on this, and this is a really good success story, and it's really, this has the, this was the, really the beginning of Chapter 90, as you guys have rewritten Chapter 90 to what we know.
This is the house that was recently painted?
Yeah.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, by hand.
What kind of shape?
Actually, believe it or not, inside is not too bad. It's pretty surprising, so I'm hoping we get some good folks to take a look at that and maybe take that on their own. And I'm going to run through all these together, because, and then if you stop me as I go, and then I'll hit all the motions. And then 703 Ninth Avenue South, this was via a quick claim deed. The prior owner demolished all, all the pieces and parts on site, and so the, the folks have submitted $100 to purchase it, and basically they maintain the green space next to their current house as well. The third one is, this is kind of weird, because it's like, easiest to describe this as a maximum tennis courts on the backside of the house we just sold to school that they're going to tear down, wouldn't look really good. But this gentleman's been carrying for this property for years. He's a super guy. And basically, we're, we're prepared to, in the plans anyway, we're moving that pump station there, and he's been taking care of it, so he offers us $300. I think that's a great piece to have him just continue to maintain and, and use that parcel there.
And we'll just put an easement, you said?
Yep. Oh, yeah, and eventually that will go away, because the plan is to actually relocate that, that pump, and we'll have an easement for it to begin with.
Oh, okay.
And I think you can still see it when you zoom in on the overhead, you can still see where that actually is, the Bullis Square.
That's right. But, oh, it is, yeah.
Yep. And then 316 Fourth Avenue North, we acquired this via tax cert. It's bare ground, but it's buildable. We had, Ms. Marquise came in, and she has 314 Fourth Avenue North, been maintaining that area over there, and she submitted an offer for $500 to buy that, and then add that to there and put a two-part ledge on it for the effect. And then 611 Eighth Avenue South, we acquired this by quick claim deed as well, basically demolished back in, by the city 2021 this year. Bare ground, buildable, recently sold the adjacent home 614 for rehab, and proposed to put this out to bid and see closing to occur after the demolition has, and basically see if they want to add that to their lot as well. And then 644 Sixth Avenue South, we got this on 657A. For those listening, that's basically after it's been vacant for over six months and a nuisance, we can then, according to state code, get the property and put it in hands of folks that want to take care of it. We're going to demolish this in 2021, and it'll be a bare ground, non-buildable. We recently sold 646 Sixth Avenue South, so possibly putting this out to bid for them, have them add that to the lot that they just bought from the city as well. So recap is basically return these to all the tax rolls, reduce any maintenance costs. So we'd ask the council to motion us six of these forward to the next council meeting, so we can set publications on each one of these to move these forward.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Robinson.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Connel.
Yes.
Shimmer.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
All right. Well, since we have a good crowd here for the community of the whole, I think we'll just run through the mayor council updates quick at the beginning here. Councilmember Robinson, do you have any updates for the public?
No.
All right. Councilmember Sealy?
It was a nice weekend, got around the Clinton Half Marathon, got second place in my division. It was a lot of fun.
What's up, babe? How'd it go, bud?
What's up?
Um...
Bill.
Some guy pushing a stroller. Might have been me.
That was a great event. Scott needed a win, that's all I have to say.
Anything else? Councilmember Connel?
Oh, you'll buy time to your slideshow.
That looked pretty good, though.
It was. No, I'm good, thank you.
Councilmember Shimmer?
I didn't mean to let you say that, you, that's what I had to...
Perfect. Councilmember Obrin?
I just want to say we had a great event at the Freedom Tree Site Saturday.
Yeah.
Joel and his guys, Kevin and his guys, all the trees forever, you know, you know, it was, it was perfect. It was a great morning, it was a great day, there was, I counted about 250 people there, so.
Yeah, it was awesome. Yeah. Councilmember Musman?
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Curran?
I worked the marathon, and I didn't see either of you take my box. We ran the 5K. Well, I won the 5K, he got second. Okay, well, call it a 5K, then I'm not a half marathon.
True. All right. Anything else? No?
How that you killed our son today.
All right, I've got a whole list of stuff here. The most important thing is the League of Cities is having a competition for facilities and improvements in communities. We are in the finals, so you need to go on the Facebook page to the Iowa League of Cities, and then you find the picture of Jerkensen Soccer Complex and like that picture. I think you can love it, too, but let's just like it, just, just to be safe.
Better than that.
And you got to make sure you, make sure you like the picture, not the post itself.
We're up by 200 points, or 200 votes.
Right, right.
And it happens to be, it happens to be against Marshalltown?
Yeah.
Where our former city administrator went to, so not that we're competitive.
Thursday at noon, I think, is when the voting stops.
Go home and like.
And they'll be out at the League of Cities.
And we'll find out Thursday night.
We'll find out.
Where do you go to do this stuff?
You, you search Iowa League of Cities on Facebook, and then there's a post on there, and then you got to go to the Jerkensen, to the Jerkensen picture. So make sure we do that.
Like and share.
Like and share, yes. So there's a whole lot of stuff going on in Clinton, so if you think there's nothing going on, you're crazy.